Oh, our favorite person. I talked to him earlier today. Usually it kinda goes in lockstep.
Usually does.
Alright.
I was busy trying to get me phone all day, so what the hell. Yeah, so, uh, especially my phone went down.
Yeah, I was, I was kinda wondering, cause I was gonna text you and see how everything was going.
Okay.
That was like late, late, late on Saturday.
Ah geez.
This one I'm very, very interested in. Yeah, me too, actually. I stopped down there the other day, it was really good. Oh, good. Did they see you?
Yeah, oh yeah, we had a lot of conversation.
Good.
They served us, it was a good time.
Good. Yeah, if you hadn't lost your phone, you would've seen me.
We don't have any water.
Yeah.
We always have water, and when I don't bring one, we don't have one.
Try to make, um... For that Thursday afternoon.
Yeah, no, I believe me, I know, I talk to Torrey regularly, I've, I've, I know. So, at the beginning of this past baseball season, I sent my guy in a bucket truck up and we fixed the lights. And I, I didn't charge anybody, I haven't charged anyone. And we gave them permission to fix the bleachers, but somebody, he did all the returning.
See, this one is interesting to me. The one that he wants, these two different topics. This is, this is definitely a concern that I've started to question as well, like, and that's maybe a question I admit. So, you know, how legitimate is it, like, everything we do lately seems to be going into closed session before. I wanna make sure that we're able to react to the type of questions with legitimate rationale, you know, legal perspective. So, the hard part is, like, we notice it. On what is being discussed. I don't know the answer to, I mean, they wanna know what's happening in closed session. Right. Hey, John, good to see you, man. Uh, but you know what I mean, like, what is it, what is our, what is our, what is a very simple answer to that, that doesn't seem cheap? No matter what we say. Yeah, I don't know how you can get around that one, so. And then I think this one is interesting. Because what are we supposed to say? Trump's on about it, like, so what are we supposed to do? Give it to him. That's what you want. That's right. To make up for all those losses. The answer is clear. Right. Right. That's right. We can't go backwards, I'm sorry that you've spent that much money, but I haven't seen you returning the investment, but that's probably private.
I wouldn't even address it to her.
It wasn't really that, it was more just, it was the closed sessions with a number of them. That, yeah, that's hard. That's, that's. But we are going to consider, like, I can tell you under Marcy's, we did maybe twice, maybe three times. That's, see, that's where that's coming from. This is, this is much different. I can see that. And now. Good. Yeah, I wonder how many conversations were being handled in closed doors that weren't even public.
A lot of towns.
That's. That's probably what, at least it's noticed. Yeah. So, yeah, actually, we're being, to your point, we're being more transparent, telling you what we're doing. Oh. We're in the past. Good evening. Good, how are you? I'll, I'll do, I'll say hi to everybody. I know this year.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, welcome everyone. This is the joint meeting with Buchanan City Commission and the Buchanan Township Board of Trustees. Monday, January twenty-fourth at seven PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Mayor Dennison, and it is once again seven PM, I would like to call the meeting with the City Buchanan Commission and Buchanan Township Board of Trustees, regular meeting, also to follow for the Department to order at this time.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Dennison?
Here.
Whedon?
Here.
Downey?
Here.
Money?
Present.
Swem?
Here.
Paul Drucker?
Here.
Ferris?
Here.
Clay?
Here.
Gallagher?
Here.
Thank you, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Sean, I'll make said motion.
Thank you, is there support?
No support.
Thank you, can I have a roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes. Thank you, would somebody like to make a motion and, uh, like, open the public hearing?
I move to open the City Buchanan's joint public hearing on the draft joint five-year recreation plan to accept public comment regarding the plan.
Thank you, is there support?
No support.
Everyone in favor, say aye.
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 And at this time, we also need a motion, the Buchanan Township joint public hearing on the draft joint five-year recreation plan to accept public comment regarding the plan. Hello, that motion? Rachel, we have a motion to add support.
Sure.
And for Lynn? Would you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Um, if you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium. State your name and address for the minutes. Is there anyone wishing to make a public comment?
Dan Vianowski, one oh three North Detroit Buchanan, Michigan. I just wanna take this opportunity to say thank you to Marcy very much, uh, the time limit was very constrained on this. Rachel and Wendy was a lot of help on this. We spent a fair amount of time going through it, proofreading it. I'm sure it got proofread about fifteen times. There's gonna be a lot of pictures in it, and I'm really, really, really excited that we're actually working with the township on something collectively, so that we can go forward. I hope this is a small step towards many steps on working with the townships. Thank you very much, thank you, Marcy, very much.
Thank you, anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Juanita Lewis, and I'm a new resident here in Buchanan. But I want to get up and make a public comment to say to the lady at the library and the young man who welcomed me so friendly, they was like the first that welcomed so friendly, besides the lady that I, of course, had to join in to get into residency. But besides her and the young man and the lady, um, Ms. Kathy, I just wanna say I am happy to be here and I hope you all be welcoming and don't be intimidated, cause I love working myself, I love doing family, cause family is important to me, but I also like to be treated fairly. So, if you wanna be treated fairly, then I wanna be treated fairly. Then we all can work together and we all can do just fine, it's enough money for everybody.
Welcome, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
I'll just echo what Dan said, I'm Marcy Hamilton with the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission, and, um, just again, a pleasure to work with the City Buchanan and Buchanan Township on a joint plan. Um, our agency serves the three counties, Bering, Cass, and Van Buren Counties, and you're one of the few that, um, choose to work with your neighbors on joint plans, and I just wanna commend you on that effort. Um, we've seen a few other recreation plans in our region, over in Decatur, South Haven, um, Hartford, Bloomingdale. I don't think any other communities in Bering County have done a joint recreation plan, so I think you're the first, yay.
Wow.
And, um, there's a few joint master plans, none in Bering County that I know of, again, the two that I know of are actually in the Bering County, so I just wanna commend you guys on thinking ahead and, um, collaborating, it makes sense, because you're obviously one community, the residents use all these parks and facilities, so, um, congratulations, and you guys should be really proud of yourselves.
Thank you.
I'm gonna chime in real, real briefly, I, I would like to thank Marcy too, I think, it's no overexaggeration to say this wouldn't even be close to being done if it weren't for Marcy. You're the reason that it's where it's at, so thank you very much for all you did. Anyone else with a public comment? Guys have any comments? Okay, I move to close the City Buchanan's joint public hearing on the draft joint five-year recreation plan. Just can I have support?
All support.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any names?
I too would like to, um, move to close the Buchanan Township's joint public hearing on the draft joint five-year recreation plan. Motion to add support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any analysts?
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna move down to joint new business, um, would someone like to make a motion to, uh, consider the resolution?
This is Money, I move to approve a resolution in, uh, two zero, two two point zero one, slash two forty-eight, to adopt the joint five-year recreational plan as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
No support.
Thank you, can we have a roll call, please?
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Moving forward, we need a motion approved. I would motion to approve resolution two zero, two two dash zero six, six, to adopt the joint five-year recreation plan as presented. Do you have a motion to add support?
Support.
Thank you, Wendy, any discussion?
I would like to echo everybody's comments of Marcy, and also, um, Heather, who came to our meeting and begged us to come down here and know what she did, so, she's a member involved. Roll call to Wendy.
Paul Drucker? Yes. Clay? Yes. Ferris?
Yes.
Gallagher? Yes. Analysts?
And we will move on now to township public comments. Do you have any comments? Township members? Right now, we will move on to the township executive comments, uh, I would like to thank everybody who signed up, also Heather for including us on this, Marcy as well, this is gonna be a huge endeavor, um, it's gonna bring just an open, um, so hopefully people into our area to enjoy our parks and, 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 it's been a long time coming, it's been a process for the city to work together, and I, I think we're good. Do you have anything you'd like to say? If not, um, we need a motion to adjourn the township meeting, and then, uh, also make note that the Buchanan City Commission is in open session. I will make the motion to adjourn the Buchanan Township meeting. Rachel, we have a motion to add support.
Support. And for Lynn, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Or actually, opposed.
Alright, thank you. Very happy to have you with us tonight. Okay, this time, we're gonna continue our, uh, regular city meeting, the Buchanan City Commission. Uh, we're gonna move down to public comments on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name and address for the minutes. Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. There was supposed to be one that got read. Um, it was turned in in time, so, I'm Dan Vianowski, one oh three North Detroit Buchanan, Michigan. I don't know who said no to reading this, but I know it went beyond, so I'm gonna read it. This is from Alan. I have two areas of comment on agenda items.
Hey, hey, excuse me, Dan, we, we, we were saving that for non-agenda items, I don't see that it really has any effect on the agenda, so we're gonna save that for the public comments later.
Well, I think it has a lot to do with agenda items.
We, we did receive the written comments.
I think it has a lot to do with it.
And we've all decided to read them later in the meeting.
When everybody's gone.
No.
So, then I'll just make my comment.
Okay.
Closed session. You guys are spending way too much time back there, and I just wanna relate back to my very first meeting as a commissioner. I went back there and I asked and I laughed and I joked. Where's the scotch, where's the cigars? You guys are spending thousands of dollars on scotch and cigars. And there's nothing really, under the Open Meetings Act, other than confering with your lawyer nonstop, that needs to be on here. Employee benefits, employee contracts, real estate deals, and I'm, I mean, it's in the law books, but real estate deals are really questionable, cause it's my tax dollars, and I'm the boss. And there's absolutely nothing you guys can't do out here that you're doing back there, cause we did ninety-five percent of the marijuana out here. The only time we went back there is when we was talking contracts with individuals. And I disagree that this is pertinent, this is very pertinent, what Alan sent us to the beginning of the meeting, but your mayor has discretion, so thank you.
Thank you, anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, let's move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
This is Money, I would so move.
Is there support? Actually, can you go down to that motion there, Larry?
Yeah, well, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented, including the approval uh, of the, uh, January twenty-fourth nineteen twenty, or twenty twenty-two bill run on the amount of eighty-five thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-three cents.
Thank you, is there support?
No support.
Thank you, can we roll call, please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. Um, oh gosh, there's so much stuff out there. I think we're moving down to reports by departments, uh, the treasurer's report.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Members of the Public, Stephanie Powers, City Treasurer. You were provided with, uh, treasurer reports with the current bank balances through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. I also did provide you with a revenue to expenditure report, a trial report, through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. And also, um, the approved expenditures of eighty-five thousand, four seventeen point sixty-three. All expenditures were customary and usual this time. The general fund, um, was thirty-seven thousand, nine forty-seven point fifty-eight. Major streets, three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-three cents. Local streets, one thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Water and sewer, forty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents, and trust and agency, thirty-two dollars. Those were our expenditures for this accounts payable check run. I also, at this time, would like to introduce a guest, Timothy Bailey, of, uh, Tim, uh, Bailey Investment Group, and LPL Financial for Honor Credit Union. He's going to consider our move of two million dollars in the city events, investment account, to an indexed annuity with approximately four percent growth and no downside, and he's going to give you some more information. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I'm waiting for Tim, yeah. You want, you want that ten percent, and then we'll...
If you have a question for Stephanie?
I'm just curious, how, how is the, the current software working, I know that we've had hiccups, right, it's been well documented, and I just wanted to get, from your perspective.
From my perspective?
Yes, ma'am.
The current software, fi, looking at it from a financial perspective, is great.
Okay.
Patrick, that report that I provided for you, I tried to, uh, look at what you had provided me, and I thought it did a really good job of making the information that you requested possible. That is a great upside of the, of the software. Right now, we are dealing, we did tr, put our payroll system into BSNA, and we gave it, we gave it a scout's try. We're not happy with it, and so we have decided to outsource the payroll to a company called Payday, and close the payroll module of BSNA. But other than that, I think the software is excellent, and it's going, once, the problem is, there's so much, and it, you won't, you have to be trained to actually get the information out of it. So, that's where we feel we're really struggling, we're really learning as quickly as we can to pull all the information that's at our fingertips. But I think going forward, as we tweak it a little bit, and actually use some of the, um, the techni, the technicality that it has, getting you guys to maybe approve things electronically, look, use more of the electronic capabilities, we're even gonna be happier. But it is slow going, and it has taken, it has been a huge learning curve, but the numbers are there, the reports are there, and we're really hoping to smooth out here soon.
Yeah, so the report Stephanie's referencing is the variance reporting we just started getting, so once we set the new budget for next, next year, we'll really be able to see how we're doing in relation to our spend, based on timing, so.
And we were hoping to do a, um, a small budget amendment by the end of January here, but time just didn't allow for us to dig into that at this moment, but that is, as soon as possible, we're going to get to that also.
Okay.
Any other questions for Stephanie?
I'm just curious, for the, print and new half, they still have an individual assisting in, in the city hall, correct?
Yes, we do, yes, we do.
Okay, do you have a, an end, a foreseeable end to that, or do you, I guess, two, two questions, do you, have, have you garnered a lot of great information, and it, and it seems beneficial, I'm just curious from your perspective, and
I...
when, what is a good timeframe that we can expect that?
I would say that there are actually two people, besides the auditors, that are working in the background to get it, get us caught up from when I was deputy treasurer and bookkeeper.
Okay.
And we are, our goal was to, um, be through the end of December, and we started on December today. So, that person is going to fall off pretty quickly, probably sometime in February. They are also the person that was helping us get our new payroll set up with the new pay company.
Okay.
And they're the ones that found problems in the payroll module that weren't addressed, that made us change our, change channels here. And so he is in the background, and he's doing a great job, but he's almost finished, we're almost caught up. And then, the other person who has got us ready for the audit, which did start today with Krugel, they were here, four people, and that's going well so far. Um, we're hoping that she will be able to give me a little treasurer training.
Okay.
And I'm not entirely sure how long we want to schedule that for, but that would be excellent, if that could happen.
Wonderful.
And that's getting ready to start very soon.
Okay.
So, I would have to imagine by the end of February at the latest?
Okay.
That would be my best guess.
Okay. And we'll hold you to it, I was just curious. Wonderful.
Yeah, don't hold, that's just my best guess.
Okay, thank you so much.
Your luck, and I'm introducing Tim Bailey.
Sorry, Tim, to keep you waiting.
City Commissioners, Mayor, Members of the public, you guys, good to meet you. Uh, my name's Timothy Bailey, I'm the, uh, advisor on the investment accounts for City Buchanan. I just wanted to make myself available, uh, to see what questions you might have. Um, I know the, uh, investment policy, we wanna make sure that we maintain, um, safety of principal, liquidity, um, diversification, and, and forbid we make any kind of return or anything like that, but that is also one of the main goals for you too, so. Um, what, what questions might you have for me?
I start with no downside on returns.
Correct, yeah.
You don't hear that ever, so.
No, so, what this is, is, uh, instead of having to invest directly in the market, which, I, I love the way this is actually is worded, in that, we can do securities, but we wanna make sure that everything else grows to a point where we cannot be hurt by any downside risk, so the return on the safe money has to be better than any kind of loss on the unsafe money, so what this is, is just a hybrid, it is a fixed account. Um, all it does is point to a market index. If the market is up, within a set period of time, they say, okay, great, what is the return on the market that we're looking at here, it's eight percent. Um, I think with the particular amount of money that we put in, uh, and then the timeframe, they're gonna look at it and say, well, we're gonna give you ninety percent of that, so you'll get nine percent. If it's one percent, they'll give you eight, nine. If it's zero percent, they'll give you zero, if it's negative twenty, you'll still get a zero percent return, so it, it really just protects that, that money. We don't ever have to have a bad conversation about it, that's, that's important to me, and to you, I imagine, because this is, um, you know, as a fiduciary, you know, you need to make sure that you take care of this money, above and beyond everything else, so.
So, on the flip side of that coin, then, if there is no downside on loss, what are we giving up in potential returns, based on where it's at?
Great question, so, there are no, there are no fees, there are no expenses with it. Um, liquidity is also important, so of the total that is being invested in the annuity, only about twenty-five percent, or of the total eight, of the total investment account, only twenty-five percent is going to the annuity, and with that, you have ten percent liquidity out of that per year. So, that's a significant chunk of money that can come out of that annuity, not to mention, you can still get ten percent of the total account value, so if it grows, you're still able to get out ten percent per year. It's only a five-year timeframe, it's very, it's similar in, um, in safety and stability as a CD.
So, it sounds like.
But it's very dissimilar, uh, when it comes to su, um, liquidity, because CDs generally don't allow for liquidity, once you put it away, you put away for that timeframe, and then you take a penalty on any amount that you take out, but this one allows for ten percent. Um, it has a penalty phase that actually decreases over five years, and then it's pretty clear, so.
Heather, is, or Stephanie, does our investment policy allow us to lock up liquidity for more than twelve months at a time?
Yeah, we reviewed this along with our township, county, county's, and...
Okay.
Uh, I mean, please, any more questions, anything that I've missed?
Anybody have any questions? I'd just like to look it over, oh, sorry, gotta wait for a motion. Yeah, no, I...
Yeah, I mean, if you have questions about liquidity, and not to mention just the compliance aspect of it, um, you know, you, from the investment perspective, or the advisory perspective, or financial planning perspective, it's, it's very easy to weight, you know, what the liquidity is. So, when you talk about, and you average in a weighted timeframe, if you have only one quarter of your money being set aside for five years, even if not, if, even if any of that liquidity was not allowed, okay, you're still at less than a one-year average maturity, taking in all the weighted average of maturity or liquidity in there. Does that make sense, did I explain that correctly?
Yeah, I think for, for me at least, I would have liked to see something that was like a side-by-side. We have some large capital expenditures, we're expecting over the next two to five years, I would say, and just how that plays into what we need to spend, so. But I'm not, like, I don't think it's a bad move, I just curious on how it stacks up with where we're currently at, against where we're going. what we need to spend, so. But I'm not, like, I don't think it's a bad move. I'm just curious on how it stacks up with where we're currently at against where we're going.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Heather, do you, can you add anything to what Patrick just asked about?
Yeah, I think it's something that if you guys would want to stabilize to our next regular meeting, we'll have that special meeting in between where we can discuss it in more detail. I think that would be perfectly fine to do if you guys would prefer that.
I would prefer that.
Yeah, I would prefer that too.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item B, Community Development Director Report. Mr. Rich Murphy.
Evening, everybody. Rich Murphy, Community Development Director. Uh, got a couple redevelopment items on the agenda this evening. Um, the first is the redevelopment liquor license, uh, action item. We've been talking a lot about this. Uh, tonight, we're taking the first step towards it, so. Um, and I've been talking to you guys a while about this, I think since I got here, that we're gonna, li- liquor licenses are critical to our redevelopment efforts. Um, they're not out there right now, they're not available, they're artificially limited by quotas. To, in their wisdom, the state of Michigan has developed a tool to allow liquor licenses to become available in districts that are redevelopment areas, so. Um, after a lo- a lo- quite a bit of research, Heather and I, with our city attorney, talking to other cities, talking to municipal league of Michigan, we did find a path forward um, in which the city of Buchanan will declare a redevelopment district that needs to meet certain, uh, investment thresholds per the state statute. We reviewed those and we believe the path forward is to make, uh, this city, civil city of Michigan, our redevelopment district, which we feel is correct and appropriate for a, a small town, very dense, to be able to meet these thresholds. Um, that's what I have before you. The first step is the redevelopment resolution to, to create the redevelopment liquor license area. Um, so basically on a parallel track, I'm working with our city assessor, um, to create an affidavit, also required by statute, that states that the city of Buchanan, over the last three preceding years, has met certain redevelopment, uh, milestones in terms of investment and dollar amount. And based on building reports that we have reviewed, we feel that there is a path forward. Heather, uh, and our city attorney has looked for, looked at this. We've created the resolution for your review. I will move forward on the, um, affidavit with the city assessor and then we s- we submit these things to the state. Once the, uh, state agrees that everything meets the criteria, this would theoretically open up applicants that have done certain things, buy property in this area, make a significant investment, not be able to find a liquor license out there on the market, to be able to pursue licenses. Uh, so it's very, uh, you know, all, all the redevelopment ti- places that we look to are using this tool. Um, typically, it's a, it can be a DDA tool. In this case, it's a redevelopment area district tool. We see a path forward. So that's kind of the first item, is a resolution, very simple. It just creates the district.
Can you, can you explain, I'm sorry, can you explain just briefly for the public, can you, can you explain how, um, the liquor license market works?
Yeah, so their population affects liquor licenses. So, um, liquor licenses aren't available right now because they never updated the populations and so you, they've created kind of a, liquor license is a commodity, right? So it's, a lot of the prices have been artificially inflated because you can't get them and when you find one, you'll pay for it. So across this, a lot of, in the Great Lakes regions that are creating these liquor license areas, um, that basically tie your pursuit of the liquor license to your significant redevelopment or investment in a certain area. A lot of times it's by water, can be by rivers, lakes, a lot of times it's in a s- uh, a downtown area, it could be a corridor, it could be in a concentrated area. But, um, certainly around the Great Lakes, um, in my, in my prior community, all up and down Lake Michigan, um, on rivers and tributaries, they're using these tools. And it's because to really crack the redevelopment nut, especially if we're bringing in retail and restaurants, you just need, you need these licenses and it, it's not like, it's not to say, hey, we're going to start passing them out. No, they're tied to very specific criteria that you have to prove up. You have to pay for it still, but it, it's a lot less than you get on the market, et cetera, so. It's really, it comes down to a, a very effective, um, redevelopment tool. In my career, I've seen it work in several places, uh, where it's really, um, driven retail and restaurant. We're in a position right now, when I came to you kind of a year ago, I'm like, I think we'll need these soon. I actually didn't think we'd need them this soon, but we do. Um, there's people that are asking me for them and I'd love to be able to provide the tool for them to proceed with, with the application process, which again, we're, as a municipality, we're doing everything we can to provide the tool. The state has to approve it and the applicant has to approve. But they can't do either one if we don't have the tool.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Murphy? Would anybody like to make a motion?
A motion to adopt resolution two zero two-two dot zero one slash two forty-one, which authorizes the creation of a city redevelopment project area.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Denison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Abstain conflict.
Money?
Yes.
Swab?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will be updating you on this path forward. This is the first step. I'd love to have licenses available in the spring and, you know, let's go Buchanan. All right, so, uh, second item is Oprah description, uh, is, is the Oprah tool, um. Oprah is the obsolete property rehabilitation program defined in the public, Michigan Public Act one forty-six that provides a reduction of future taxes on improvements made, uh, in a property and, um, in an eligible building. Now, the property needs to be in an eligible district and that's essentially, uh, what I will be bringing forward to you at your February fourteenth meeting is a resolution to create a district for each of the properties, so, um. You know, I outlined what the tool does. It basically freezes taxes, uh, in cases where, uh, an investor is providing a lot of money to a project, typically several hundred thousands of dollars or millions, et cetera, so, um, and what it does is it freezes those taxes, so you'd never lose status quo. You only defer the taxation to allow the property to develop and then eventually, the property, when it's fully developed, after the period of abatement, goes back on the tax bills full boat. So that's the incentive. The properties that we're talking about here, um, are two very significant catalytic investments. The first one is a video store that has been vacant for a decade on Front, Front Street. I don't know if you could come up with a better definition of obsolescence, but a video store is, is a great example in this case to be rehabilitated into, uh, an exciting, um, retail and upper story residential project. Significant catalyst, catalytic, catalytic, uh, investment. Uh, that's at one oh one Days Avenue. Again, at, February fourteenth, we'll be coming to you, uh, with the full public hearing, um, that we're required to do advertising, the creation of the district, which is essentially the property. And, uh, we do require, again, a, a, a statement from the assessor, just confirming the obsolescence of the property. Additionally, there's a second property that we're seeking Oprah for, which is Old Stark School, that, uh, was recently purchased by an investor, uh, for benefit of the public. This is a school that is no longer in use, um, no longer in use by Buchanan Community Schools, has then been sold to a private investor who has a vision to return it back to, um, a vibrant community asset. And so they'll be requesting, again, tax abatement, uh, for that property at five oh two Claremont, Old Stark School. I think that's all I had. Um, because this is a tool we haven't used in a while, I wanted to kind of pre-explain it to you guys. This is an effort between the City of Buchanan and Cornerstone Alliance, the Economic Development Agency. They've been really awesome to work with, Zach Brown and Kathy Tilly over there, uh, at Corners, Cornerstone, and they will be here at our, uh, February fourteenth meeting to, uh, be present for the public hearing and any questions that are associated with the, uh, the resolution or any of the statements. That's again, step one. A lot of these state statutes come in more than multiple steps. We create the district. Then each investor goes back, they fill out the application, they, they make the actual request, then you see the numbers. They're requesting how long and then it comes before the commission for your review and approval. Now, in this case, the tax abatement is really, results in two very significant, um, investments in Buchanan, in buildings that have been vacant for decades. So it's a very appropriate and correct use of the tool and, um, I'm excited, the investors are excited to move forward, so. With that, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Well, you jumped right into the tax abatements. I kind of had a question on this redevelopment of, of the liquor license.
Mm-hmm.
Is this going to in any way, uh, and it should, I, I would think, I think, enhance our social district that we're, that we, we're looking at, you know, uh, downtown?
Yeah.
Is, uh...
Absolutely.
Because we, yeah, because we, you know, we kind of, we kind of fell off that project a little bit with everything that went on. I know we've, we've got literature and material and the cups and everything, so I was just wondering, is this going to help with that, uh, particular project?
I think what it will do is help us launch more retail and restaurants downtown, which then will be available participants in a social district. We'll have kind of critical mass and, you know, a, a few or several dining options, um, downtown and, um, that will allow us, um, to leverage the social district tool more. Right now, part of the problem is we just have a few licenses downtown and, um, due to various reasons, you know, one's for sale, the other one, we weren't able to launch really an effective, uh, social district, but this is kind of answering that question. Um, got to get more op- we got to get more investors down here. You can't open a restaurant without a liquor license, so you got to sell the liquor license. You got to crack that nut. That's what we're trying to do, so. And it, you know, there's a lot of interest in, in real estate downtown, um, so I, I think that with this tool, we'll be able to drive it.
Thanks, Rich. Once again, and I, I mentioned it in another meeting, that I just wanted to say thank you. I realize that, you know, sometimes people don't see what you're doing and, and this is, uh, indicative of what you are working hard on to bring back to the City of Buchanan. Uh, and I just wanted to make that as a public notice because there is always questions about what are we doing? Well, uh, the city didn't die overnight and it's not going to come back overnight. And I know that, that these type of things are, are going to be what bring our city back and, and as my kids start to grow up and, and come back and visit, that we're going to have an opportunity for, you know, a lot more enjoyment, a lot more opportunity to have entertainment in town because of, because of these situations.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, some of these states opt in, they just take time. We want to be sure we're doing it right. We don't want to rush forward, not notify people. But, you know, I mean, I can just tell you what I'm seeing and feeling right now, there's a wave of revitalization in Buchanan and I, my, my advice to everybody is enjoy it. Enjoy the way up. Let's not try to rush anything. Let's do it the right way. Let's use the tools and, uh, I think we're moving in the right direction, so.
Thanks, Rich. Excellent.
I got a question, Rich.
Yeah.
Uh, what other industry, industries are you working on right now? What are we trying to bring to Buchanan?
We are trying to drive, first of all, retail and restaurant downtown. Um, we have cannabis coming in the door, we know that. But the, uh, the option is, for cannabis, is to drive the industrial corridors. So we're pressing pause on retail cannabis downtown, leveraging the industrial corridors. It's working. We have young investors coming to Buchanan, investing everything they have in these buildings that haven't been the lights on in, in, you know, twenty years. That's, that's what's happening in the corridors. That comes with jobs, investment creation. Now, I'm all, we have a goal-setting, uh, workshop coming up. I mean, I, I, the next level is to see, could we bring in small technology firms? Um, could we, uh, try to build a maker culture? So more makers, uh, small manufacturing all day long. Let's, you know, but we're trying to create a buzz and a sense of self right now that Buchanan can be, can compete with all these other places that we're going. We're up against other places. And people with capital are s- are now finally looking at Buchanan. Um, but, you know, my whole, my whole philosophy is build this, build the core and the sense of self, create the buzz, get, and then graduate to larger investments. Be the place people want to live, be, go after s- uh, small high tech, go after, continue to drive the cannabis, uh, grow in, in, um, in process. Small family manufacturing, yes. Uh, and I'm, I'm open to any goals that you guys have, you know, I mean, you got to really start with building blocks. I mean, yes, someday I'd like to go after, you know, several hundred per- person employer. We got, we got to get to that step, you know, so.
Well, I think hand in hand there, we still have a property elector voice. Well, we don't have it, but it's operated by the city. Brownfield and, uh, we're still working on a, uh, Brownfield Committee and, I don't know, what would, Heather, can you help me here?
Yeah, so we are working to reform our Brownfield redevelopment committee. We're in talks right now with the city's environmental legal consultant, James Enright. He's helping us guide us through that path. Um, we do see some hurdles right now. We're trying to remove some restrictive covenants on properties once we get that accomplished and transition and re-investigate that committee.
We have people looking at residential parcels, you know. I mean, it, there's interest right now. I think we're doing really well. We just need to keep doing more of what we're doing. Um, so. I'm also very interested in ideas for what to go after from the leadership, but I'd love to have that discussion with all of you, so.
Right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Rich. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move down into new business, considering an enclosed session to discuss matters subject to attorney-client privilege. Anybody like to make a motion?
Sean, I'll make said motion.
Can you, can you read it?
Oh.
Page five.
Uh, Sean, uh, I make a motion to enter closed session to discuss matters subject to attorney-client privilege pursuant to MCL one five point two six eight, section eight one H.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is Money. I'd support.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swab?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes. Thank you.
You guys really didn't read the rules about opening the video. You got a list of pages.
Dan, I'm gonna ask you one time.
You're not gonna ask me nothing, 'cause you're not in session, Sean, so read your rules. I got the yellow book right here, I read the rules. I'm gonna ask them one at a time. Give me a break. All sorts, you wanna escort me out of here?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Well, I like about you, see, I'm sure about some of the guys, all of them, right? Well, well, they can try to read y'all practice stuff now, and say, "Cheese rush", but you're rather, so, I love the chocolate, you know?